September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Going to ask everybody if you would to please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan. I stand. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
With that, I would ask our town clerk to please call a roll.
Supervisor Culpa.
Here.
Deputy Supervisor Lee Evan. Councilmember Berger.
Here.
And Councilmember Zukala.
Here. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. A motion of those as they appeared.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is proclamation. We did a proclamation supporting Fire Prevention Week, October fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. And we're happy to announce that. Brad's very excited about Fire Prevention Week.
Taking out the bell.
So. Yeah, I got it. With that, we have one public hearing this evening on Resolution eight oh nine. It's a demolition of six sixty-seven Emerson Drive, unsafe building. An emotion to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd ask our coenforcement office, please come up.
Good evening Supervisor Culpa, members of the town board. My name is Mark Burke, Commissioner of Building for the town of Amherst. I'm before you this evening regarding the property located at six sixty-seven Emerson Drive, Amherst, New York, one four two two six. Following inspection by the building department, this structure has been determined to be unsafe as defined under Town Code Section one five one dash five six, unsafe buildings and structures. The building exhibits severe structural deterioration, water damage, mold, and poses a risk to health, safety, and welfare to the public. In accordance with the procedures set forth in the town code, notice has been duly served upon the estate advising of the violations and affording an opportunity to remedy the condition. The estate has failed to take corrective action within the required timeframe. At this point, I'd like Bill, the coenforcement officer in charge of this case, to come up and provide the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, Board. As Mark mentioned, we're putting a request in for the approval to begin the demolition of six sixty-seven Emerson Drive. We've had property maintenance at this property since two thousand and ten. We've had our town contractor, Deering Landscape, and his team have remedied exterior violations, including grass cutting six to eight times per year, spring cleanup such as branches, debris around the property. And most recently, we've had the basement pumped at least four or five times of four to five feet of water that continually fills the basement. The homeowner, Margaret L. Shell, she did pass away in two thousand seventeen after being in an assisted living for at least two years. So the house has been vacant for a good ten years at this point. The condition of the property remains unsafe, uninhabitable, and the structural issues include failing floor joists, cracked and failing chimney, exterior protection and covering in a state of disrepair. The town's been working with the neighbors of Emerson for many years now, who have been very patient with us, keeping me informed of all activity on the property, which has been a great help, and we've done the best we can to try to keep the neighbors, you know, satisfied, doing as much as we can up until this point. The Commissioner of Building is requesting the demolition of this property as soon as practical. The property itself was constructed in nineteen forty, and the Shell family has owned it from its conception back in nineteen forty. Just to reiterate some of the issues that we've had and the violations, yard debris, yard debris both front and rear, overgrown weeds, lawn, bushes, gutters overgrown, and in disrepair, high grass along the front entrance, the driveway, entrance obstruction, substantial tree branches, limbs on the ground in the rear yard, the gutters failing and falling right off of the structure, pounding water in the backyard, major structural damage due to the extensive moisture and mold throughout the entire home, basement full of standing water, damage broken into front screened-in porch, you know, children and kids, teenagers breaking in there. We found a bunch of debris, food, alcohol containers, things of that sort. I've been involved in the case for four and a half years, and I've had warrants obtained through, issued by the town justice so we could actually take full walkthroughs of the property. And again, I wanted to note that a lot of the violations I just met were happened on multiple occasions. So this gives you an example of kind of a little bit of a before and after what we've been able to do up until this point. You can see the overgrowth here on the left-hand side. That's kind of what the property looked like. That's kind of unfortunately what the neighbors had to look at for ten years. But again, building a rapport with a few of the neighbors, they called me directly, we get our team right out there to take care of it. The picture on the left is how it looked after I had our landscapers trim it down a little bit, so it made a little bit more presentable for the community. Next. This is a photo here, and I took a picture of the basement. Those stairs are failing. The stairs are broken. When I sent my contractor down there, he had to actually use a ladder to get down there. He could not walk on those stairs. It's hard to see the pounding water there, but we were not going to attempt to go down there. On the, on the right-hand side there, you see his truck, and you see the water that was being pumped to the street. It was just a tremendous amount of water, and a few days later, unfortunately, it filled back up. So the commissioner made a decision to not continue to pump it. You know, we left it. Here's the rear of the structure here. You can see the protective coating just completely falling off. The roof failing, the gutters failing. I believe I have another picture later in the presentation. You can see the chimneys actually chipping away at the base and also structurally unsafe. This actually shows an interior picture of the kitchen from two different shots. The ceiling has literally, you know, caved in, failing joists. I don't know what type of insulation was put in there, but it's almost just like a brown paste has fallen there. It's just wet damp material all over the kitchen. I could even feel in the kitchen floorboards, they're very spongy, almost like you could fall right through, right through the floor. Tons of debris throughout the house. The next slide here shows the exterior garage. Same thing, failing roof, failing garage door, rotted, signs of rodents. And we actually had some additional complaints from neighboring homes and properties, you know, directly behind that that actually, you know, saw rodents and things exiting that garage. So that is actually part of our request as well as to take that down. This is actually the interior. That is the dining room in the rear hallway entering the kitchen. So you can see the dining area, just the entire ceiling just collapsed right over that entire room. Which it's unfortunate. It was actually, you know, sad to see that because it looked at some point that this woman left and just never came home. You know, she went to assisted living. No one ever entered the house again, and, you know, that's how, that's how it appeared. Next slide here, there's an exterior front porch. This is where it's been broken into numerous times. I mean, the windows are all just broken out. The screen door is broken. It won't even latch. You know, we had a town lock at one point on the front door. That clasp had been broke numerous times as well. And then I got a better view here of the chimney where you could see where it's just completely eroding towards the base of the roof. And again, just recapping, this is how the front looked before we had the landscapers kind of at least make it as presentable as we could. You know, you can see the driveway there and the, and the, that's the front screened-in porch there with the six sixty-seven on it. That's what was broken into numerous times. And then finally, this is, I took just two random shots. I could have taken more throughout the house, but black mold throughout every room. The moisture, you can just feel it in the air, and it's, it's on the ceilings, it's on the walls, floors. And then finally, just the painting throughout the whole house, the peeling, it looks like possibly, you know, lead paint, the window frames on the exterior of the house just peeling away, siding exterior peeling away. So the building commissioner has determined again that this property remains uninhabitable and unsafe. Once the town board grants the approval demolition process will begin immediately, we'll, we'll begin to, to look into putting bids out for the job. All the demolition costs will be funded through the town's Community Development Block Grant Program as a need to address a slum and blighted property. Any questions and concerns I could answer for you?
So why is it just coming to us now for demolition?
Yeah, we were hoping, I'm not sure if Community Development wants to, we were hoping that the house could be sold. It actually had been sold two times at tax, at tax foreclosure, and both buyers backed out of the sale, forfeiting their deposits based on what they saw once they were actually to get into the property and saw what it would take to remedy the situation.
Okay. I think also I can add to that. This property has been on our distressed properties list for quite some time. And the last thing we always want to do is demolish a house. You know, that's the last resort. So if there is an opportunity to save the structure and save the home, which we have done in the past, I think we've brought homes to this board before where we've been able to avoid a demolition, we'd like to do that. But in this case, unfortunately, I would like to formally recommend to the town board that the structure at six sixty-seven Emerson Drive be ordered demolished in the interest of public safety, and upon approval, the town will proceed with demolition, removal of debris, and any necessary site restoration with the cost to be recovered by the town's Community Block Grant Program.
I doubt you're going to have a hard time with the town board on that, but I do understand there's some residents here from that area, and if somebody would like to speak, we'll.
Mark.
Up, sir. Oh, sorry. Okay.
So Mark, I'm going to ask you a question as well. I didn't hear it in the presentation. Is there a next of kin or any family members for the, for the woman who moved out abruptly?
Did we try to? I understand there is an estate, and there is an attorney that is assigned to this estate, shall we say? And I know during our search and survey, our law department provided all the information to that individual. They were personally served. They have an opportunity to be here tonight if they wanted to be. But there is, there is an attorney that is in charge of this estate. We have not heard from them.
And then if you get town approval today, what's the timeline on the demolition?
So we would put together bid documents for a public bid, and then we'd have to advertise for that. So I would guess sixty days max. Sure.
What I, what I had said, albeit a little bit quietly, was I don't foresee there being a town board issue with the demolition. However, there is an opportunity for residents to comment. I'm going to invite them up now. And just ask you to come up to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record and share your comments or questions.
Good evening, town board members. My name is Frank Pastor. I live at thirty-seven Monarch Drive and the president of the Hartford North Bailey Homeowners Association. And to start with, we're very glad that this is finally taking place. We're in complete compliance. We're completely agreement with you. The question I have is, why did it take this long to do this? Why does it take ten years to condemo house? And that, that's deplorable condition. It runs the neighborhood down. Why does it take that long?
So I, I just asked that same question. The building commissioner did provide a response, so I'm going to just stay to that comment.
So I didn't hear you.
So in instances like this.
Jeff, talk, Jeff, Mark, talk into the microphone.
In instances like this, the last resort again is to demolish a house. We'd like to save the house if possible. In many instances, we've been able to accommodate that situation. I think Bill explained that this house did go for tax foreclosure, and we're at tax auction twice. It was sold twice. And both times, the people that had purchased it have to put down a down payment. They lose that down payment if they back out of the deal, which both parties did at separate occasions. And we finally have gotten to a point where it is in just such a state that there really is no saving this house.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Helen Carter, and I live at fifty-five Manser Drive, which is around the block from this property. I absolutely have to tell you, when you say, how did this go on for so long? There's probably not one person in this room that's driven. There are a couple. There are prob, that have driven past this property or had any idea what the inside of their property looked like. I've known about it because my next-door neighbor has had to deal with this all this time. And again, the owner has been dead for eight years. So it definitely has been neglected. I live across the street from a house that had mold all over the black, outside of the house, and that got left for a very long time, and that became a HUD house. A HUD house would have been fine if somebody did this with six sixty-seven a long time ago. It's, it's past needing to be put out of its misery. There isn't one person in this room that would have ever lived in this house or next door to it or around the block from it. The home's been vacant for more than ten years. In that time, the neighbors have had to call the town to request lawn mowing, snow removal, and no, it's not their job. But they had to do it. The basement has been flooded multiple times, as I just said, at least four times, that it had to be bailed out. There's mold in the house. The roof shingles have cut through the neighbor's screen window and landed on the neighbor's bed. That's how close they lived to this house. There's pieces of chimney that have flown onto the neighbor's yard where the neighbor's mother, who's ninety, does her gardening. Neighbors have found food containers in the backyard. Police had to be called. Once I called them because there, while there's the screen door that waves, there's an interior door that had a lock on it that was also left unlocked, and the police came and took care of that. I thank you for listening. And I'll say it again, I thank you for listening.
David Colwell, sixteen Empress Avenue. I am vice president of the Hartford Estates North Bailey Homeowners Association. And on behalf of the neighborhood, we'd like to see this property disappear. Most of what I'd like to say in terms of how long this has taken has been said by speakers ahead of me. I did tour the property from the outside last week, and looking at the roof, I'm assuming it rains inside that house in a heavy rain. I had to replace the roof on my house recently. My roof looked really good compared to that one. The, I don't know if anybody had me said it, the immediate next-door neighbor desired to be here and is ill today. So don't count her absence as disinterest. She is certainly interested in seeing this property disappear, and I'd like to urge you to order it demolished, move as quickly as possible to have that order accomplished, to have it demolished. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing that I'm going to motion the first, oh, sorry.
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. I can understand the frustration of the homeowners nearby, and I'm, my guess is the building department probably shares that frustration. I did a few of these many years ago when I worked here, and typically, when you have an estate involved, that complicates matters quite a bit. I mean, you know, if this person was in assisted living, I don't know if there were any, you know, Medicaid liens attached to it or anything like that. But that can complicate things dramatically with it. It'd be nice if things could move more smoothly, but they, sometimes they don't. My recollection is that we had one, when I was here several years ago, that had been a mess for twelve years, which goes beyond this one. And it was unfortunate because the elderly woman who lived there died in an assisted living facility. Her son was living there, but he had his own share of issues. As the house deteriorated, he moved into the garage and was sleeping in his car. And the town was citing, you know, putting citations on the house for all kinds of building code violations. He consulted a lawyer, and the lawyer, ever helpful, told him, well, you don't own it. Just move away and left it sitting there. And finally, we got some action on it, and we were able to, in that case, I think we were actually able to rehab it. I don't think we had to demolish it, but it was bad enough that the neighbors were complaining of rodents, you know, rats coming and going from the house. All of a sudden, the rats stopped coming and going, and you couldn't figure out why, and when the building department got in there, they found out that a bunch of feral cats in there had moved in and changed the rat, chased the rats away. So these things are tough to go through. They are, and it's a time-consuming process, but yeah, you hope it can move more quickly, but it sounds to me like everybody did what they could with the situation they were handling. I know it's long and frustrating for the neighbors, but they're just tough to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I would motion to adopt the seeker findings associated with the demolition.
No, we have, don't we have to do seeker before we close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next, I'll motion to grant or to approve the demolition of six sixty-seven Emerson Drive.
Yes.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That part.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get it done. The next item on the agenda are, we have development review actions for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven seventy-seven, which is seeker determination on two five seven seven Millersport Highway, Z twenty twenty-five dash zero two. I am going to motion to open, to move the seeker findings associated with the project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, so there were a number of people who did sign up to speak on the subject matter. Sure you weren't aware that the subject was scheduled before public expression. So I'm actually going to hold the topic until after public expression. So with that, I'm going to motion to open public expression at this time.
Second.
There are a couple of things that, oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
There are a couple of items that I am, reason why we're holding the meeting this evening is so that coincided with the distribution of the town supervisor's budget to the town board. I'm just going to give Tim a moment to open that. So I am going to go through just, this is a three-page overview. It's not meant to be the presentation that I'll do at the public hearings. It is meant to establish that there will be public hearings for the budget on ten fourteen here at Town Hall at seven P M, on ten twenty-four twenty-five at the Senior Center at ten A M, and on ten twenty-seven twenty-five at Town Hall at seven P M. We will also receive mail to the town of Amherst, Attention Town Board, fifty-five eighty-three Bain Street, Williamsville, New York, one four two two one. You may also email budgetcomments@amherst.n y dot U S. And budget comments can be accessed on the town website at H T T P, H T T P S colon backslash backslash W W W dot amherst dot N Y dot U S backslash budget comments. And those comments will be entered into the record for the public hearing. I know this, this page is small. Yep.
Can you just tell people where it's posted, the budget's posted?
It will be posted to the website under, on, and you'll find it on the link on the front of the website.
Thank you.
Also available, it will also be available at the libraries. So the budget this year, there's a couple of items that I want to point out. First, we're significantly under a tax cap. There is an increase in the levy this year. We did have a decent amount of growth in terms of especially commercial and multifamily housing built out, which if you go to the next page, results, all the way at the bottom, sorry, in a, a extremely modest negative zero point zero two percent rate decrease or a savings of thirty-two cents per average household. So it's essentially a flat rate this year, a very minuscule decrease. And we will be presenting that, as I said, on the evening of the fourteenth, during the day on the twenty-fourth, and in the evening of the twenty-seventh, I will be going into detail about the capital plan, the budget at that time, along with, I'm going to re, represent the town borrowing process, which I did present last year, thanks to, with help from our bond counsel and our finance director, Lynda Gil. The other thing that I do want to announce at the head end of this is it was brought to our, our attention at work session. There was a question about the wording of our executive session language or the title of the executive session topic. The board did agree, as did our attorney, that the specific language, we did return to this room, albeit nobody was here anymore. But we did agree that the language subject to land use or boulevard mall and gun club in parentheses should have read, instead of land use, it should have had subject to, subject of disposition in contract negotiations for both of those. So with that, I'm going to issue a, an apology. And Joe Voitovich, thank you for bringing that to our attention. That will be corrected in our minutes and reflected that those were, it was executive session, con, talk, subject to both land dispositions in both cases. Okay, that said, we do have two pages up here. I will ask Joe to please come forward as he is first on the list. Joe, he left. Okay. Bill Blake, you're next.
Thank you. Bill Blake, Feral Lawn Drive. I have a couple of things I'd like to address. At the, at the last board meeting, I presented some information regarding an alternative option for the Eggersville Youth Center. I presented that to Deputy Supervisor Lavine. I think it's a great opportunity that we should look at. The building has everything that you would want. It's fully furnished. It's got a security system. It's got a playground right outside. It's got ample parking, and it would save town taxpayers just on the lease cost alone, about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year. If this new building is built behind thirteen fifty, and it starts after the first of the year, it's going to have to be all electric, which I think is going to be a significant cost for utilities. So as of today, I talked to the person whose name was on that information that I, I shared with you, and they have not received any call from the board to go and tour that, that building. And I would ask you to please take this into consideration because it is a viable option, and it would help that area of the, of Eggersville with, with having someone in that building. Second thing I want to just bring up is the gun club. We bought that in December of twenty twenty-four for five million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We bought the thirty-three acres. We had a bond resolution that I do not believe was executed. We didn't go out and bond that. I think we borrowed that money from the general fund. We sold that property, or we're in the process of selling that property, twenty-one acres, acres for four point nine million. What happens to the other eight hundred and five thousand dollars to pay back the general fund? Is that going to be bonded out, or we have to keep it because the ball diamonds are on there? So I think it's, it's imperative that, that the taxpayers understand where that extra money is going to come from to pay back the general fund.
I, I will answer that question after public expression.
Thank you.
Okay. Andrea Morganti.
Good evening Supervisor Culpa, Deputy Supervisor Lavine, Councilman Zukala, and Councilwoman Berger. My name is Andrea Morganti, and I reside in Getzville. Deputy Supervisor Lavine, I've had the opportunity to attend your recent debates with Dan Gagliardo, and I've heard you emphasize transparency is a key pillar of your platform. And if, and keep, I'm sorry. In governance, transparency refers to making policies, decisions, and spending transparent to the public, thereby preventing corruption and fostering trust. But I'm struggling to understand what your definition of. But I'm struggling to understand what your definition of transparency truly is. How have you demonstrated transparency in the closed-door negotiations surrounding thirteen fifty Bailey and the gun club? The announcement of the Westwood property gift in April revealed that you had been in negotiations for nearly a year without any public input. That's not transparency, that's called exclusion. To make matters worse, Amherst residents were given forty-eight hours notice of a special town board meeting scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-fifth at four P M. to discuss the Westwood proposal. We found out about this because an Amherst concerned citizen member saw it on Councilwoman Marinucci's Facebook page. By the way, we wanted to thank her for posting it. The notice did not appear in the Amherst Bee or the Buffalo News. And unless someone was actively monitoring the town's communication and Councilwoman Marinucci's Facebook page, they would have missed it entirely. Why wasn't this item placed on the regular Tuesday town board meeting agenda? And you wonder why so many residents feel distrust towards this town board? So I ask you directly Deputy Supervisor Lavin, what is your definition of transparency? Because from where I stand, it doesn't seem to align with the principles of transparent, accountable governance that Amherst residents deserve. Thank you.
Good evening, David Przaznick, Shellish Road, Amherst, New York. I come in front of the town board again, and you guys have heard me speak before regarding the need for correcting the egregious and wrongful allocation of spec- special district fire taxes in the town. I've been discussing this in front of the board now for over seven years. I reside in North Amherst Fire District that pays five to six times what other districts pay. After my last meeting on February third, two thousand twenty-five, I sent an email to all of you with three specific proposals to help alleviate this gross inequity of the allocation of the fire tax. The first would be to create a single fund of fire district taxes and allocate them based on an assessed value, perhaps a flat value, similar to how waste services are allocated in the town. The second proposed item was to merge the financial budgets of North Amherst and Getzville. I would suggest no changes operationally to the fire department, simply merging the budgets of the adjoining districts that only impact the two districts. This change would mean a four hundred thousand dollar assessed value would increase the Getzville annual allocation by a mere twenty-eight dollars and would lower the corresponding North Amherst allocation by six hundred and eighty-one dollars. A seven hundred thousand dollar assessment would decrease, would increase Getzville by forty-nine dollars, decrease North Amherst by eleven hundred ninety-two dollars. Unbelievable as it seems, that's how disproportionate the current allocations are. No one wants any tax increases, but the impact of North Amherst is so large, it really suggested change. They would benefit, they would be beneficial with having minimal impact to, to Getzville. Uh, the last and perhaps the simplest is to wreck a small portion of the town's general funds to supplement the North Amherst fire budget. A mere hundred thousand dollars would lower the four hundred thousand dollar assessed home by two hundred and fifty-six dollars. During my meeting, I was informed that Councilman Zucala is the liaison for the fire districts and has follow-up emailed to me, and, and I quote, "I did review your numbers. They are correct. The idea of having one fire tax for the entire town has merit. Some people would see a tax decrease, some won't. I'm in favor of it. I have not spoken to any other town member on this yet. I spoke to the town attorney yesterday. Moving to such a system is not a simple task. I'm waiting to hear how different, difficult the process would be and may also take some time to accomplish. When I hear what we would need to do, I'll arrange a meeting. In the meantime, I'm going to the New York State Conference of Towers, Towns later this month. At that conference, I will ask the New York State Controller's Office people if another town has done this and, and how. We have no need to reinvent the wheel. When I have more information, I will let you know." On April twenty-ninth, I sent Councilman Zucala another follow-up email, asking for an update and meeting to review my proposals. As of today, eight months after my last meeting and months after my follow-up, I've heard nothing back. This issue has been acknowledged by Supervisor Culpa in the Buffalo News on May eighteenth to twenty-four as a financial inequity that needs to be resolved for the residents of North Amherst. I just need thirty seconds. From a communications standpoint, when I sent the first email to the group on February fifth, I sent a return receipt request that I received red acknowledgements from all but one of you. Councilman Lavin, the note I received back June fifth, three months after the initial email was, your message was deleted without being read. So I would hope, you know, as you run for supervisor this year, you at least give residents like myself the courtesy of addressing a topic rather than just deleting it. So again, I would ask the town board to please, again, I, I feel like every time I'm up here talking about it, the town board nods in agreement, but I get no responses. Thank you.
Okay. Amber. Amber Sastry?
Hi, council members, um, and my name is Amber Sastry. I'm from sixteen Pharaoh's Court. That's in the Royal Woods neighborhood of Amherst. Um, we're talking about the pedestrian path, uh, along Young's Road that goes from, uh, Dauphin to Klein. So that's right, uh, north of Basset Park and it's the, uh, if you're going from Basset Park north on Young's, it would be on the west-hand side. So right now, what we have there is a pathway, um, that is narrow. It's slanted towards traffic. Um, there's no barrier between pedestrians or bikers, um, and traffic that's going at forty-five plus miles per hour. And it's often littered with debris and, and other things, making it treacherous, particularly, um, for anyone riding a bike. Um, we brought this before the Traffic Safety Board in twenty twenty-one, and the Traffic Safety Board made recommendations. Some of them were to be taken up by the town council and some were to be taken up by the highway department. Uh, that summer, Young's Road was, uh, repaved in that area and so we thought something might be happening. Um, nothing was done. The recommendations were ignored, uh, not taken up, implemented. In twenty twenty-four, we came back to the Traffic Safety Board. We explained, um, what the situation was, and again, they made recommendations. Um, some of them were that the town council, I have the recommendations right here, actually, from twenty twenty-four. Um, they were incorporate path improvements into the bike master plan. Just on that, I should say, right where this path begins, which is hard to describe, it's sort of an extended paved curb, if you can imagine. There's no fog line, um, it slants toward the road. Um, right before, at, right where this path begins, all along Young, Young's Road, there's a shoulder with a fog line. Right here, it says bike lane ends. Why? I'm presuming because it's not safe. The reason I'm here is because it's the only path that our residents have to connect us to, to our community, particularly Basset Park or schools, um, the library, Clearfield Pool, wherever we want to go. This is the only way we have to get there if we're heading south. And, um, it's unsafe. Um, so we want to connect it to the bike plant, the bike planet. We need to be, also, Young's Road is, uh, deemed, uh, a bike route, I believe, from Whirly to, um, from Casey to Whirly. And this is a break in the bike path. Um, there was also a recommendation to ensure year-round maintenance, which was not done. And, um, so we're here to talk about our experience on the bike path. My children are here to, to share what it's like to be on that space.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, oop. Go ahead.
Uh, hi, I'm Sirius Sastry, that's my mom. And I use the bike path to, uh, go to school. And it's, uh, really scary. So there's not a lot of space, maybe three or four feet. And there's usually branches on it. So when I'm riding my bike, if I go over anything, I, I get nervous that I'm going to go right into the road and there's nothing really to stop me and no buffer or, or like any extra space. And because the cars are so close and they're going really fast, every time I hear a car coming, I get pretty scared and, yeah, I just, I don't know why nothing has been done, but I really think something should be done for it to be safer. So, uh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, hi, I'm Hugh Sastry and I sometimes, like, one time I was going to the pool and we were going and I just get scared, like, we have to, like, walk our bikes and we can't actually ride them, like, down the path because it's, like, slanted, like they said, and, um, it's not very wide and there's always, like, a lot of stuff there. And if, even when I am walking my bike, if, like, you trip, then you could fall into the road and I think that's just really scary. Okay.
Um, hi, I'm Anjali Sastry and once I was coming back from Basset Park with my mom and my dog and I was riding my bike and I was going pretty slowly, but there were still a lot of sticks on the path and I wasn't, I was going pretty slow, but I, my bike, like, kind of stumbled on the sidewalk and I fell into the road with my bike and it was just really scary. I didn't go that far in, but I did not like it at all.
I'm just going to steal ten seconds of our time to say, we're willing to work with the council on a creative solution. We want a bike master plan that serves our community, connects us. And, you know, if we need to look for grant funds, we're willing to cooperate and, and, but we don't want to be ignored any longer. Um, we, I did meet with Mr. Zucala about this and, um, but nothing has been done as far as implementing those recommendations. And that's what we're looking for today, to put it on the agenda. Let's move something forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, next is John O'Brien.
Hi, my name is John O'Brien. Um, I'm here to talk about the twenty-five seventy-seven Millersport property. I know you, this has been before, the agenda before. Uh, I'm the treasurer of the Collingwood Estates Condominium Association, which is right behind the property. And I think you've heard from us in the past, we're concerned about the zoning of that property. Um, just, this is a tax bill, it's my tax bill. But in interpolating the fifty homes that are in our community, we have an assessed value of somewhere north of eighteen million dollars. And we're paying, uh, somewhere north of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in county and town taxes. So we're not individuals, we're a group, there's fifty of us, we're affected by this, uh, property. Um, there's been no communication with Bevalacqua. In the past, we've had tremendous communication with the Wester Group that, uh, also did some renovations behind our property, that resulted in, um, accommodations to us as homeowners. So if the town can't change the, um, the zoning as requested by our group, we'd at least like to have an opportunity, uh, to talk to the Bevalacqua group to get some accommodations from, from the developer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, sorry, I can't read the middle name. Some, okay, something.
Hi, I'm Melissa Semaday Finley. I am representing the neighbors of Collins Court. Um, I've been in front of the board before, um, so not to be too repetitive here. Um, but as I've said in the past, we view this rezoning not to be to the benefit of the community and really to just be the equivalent of an illegal spot zoning. So we've asked the board to consider the factors that under New York State case law should be considered. So first, is the rezoning consistent with a comprehensive land use plan? Um, as I've stated before, it is not. The town of Amherst comprehensive plan explicitly discourages additional commercial development on Millersport Highway, which is exactly where this would be. Uh, also, the zoning code itself distinguishes the neighborhood business district as a, as a district that's supposed to take commercial development, um, is supposed to ensure the compatibility of the commercial development with the surrounding residential development. It's specifically designed to make sure commercial development that's right adjacent to a, a large residential neighborhood makes sense, um, and is consistent and won't be to the detriment of that community. On the other hand, a general business district specifically says that that use will require large land areas, generate large volumes of traffic, and generate large volumes of evening activity. None of those things are compatible with having residential, residential development immediately adjacent to the property. The other factor that we need everybody to consider is, does the rezoning benefit an individual developer to the detriment of the other property owners? Um, as I explained last meeting, this drive-through is literally right next to these residents' backyard. Um, there's no buffer, there's no large space in between, it's, it's right there. Um, they will be able to hear the cars, they will be able to smell the exhaust, they will hear the speaker. Um, it's just a very unpleasant nuisance on people who otherwise had a quiet neighborhood. Um, I also want to mention that in terms of considering the detriment to the community, no proper consideration has been done here. So there's been no noise studies provided, there's been no traffic studies provided, there's been no environmental studies, the exhaust that's going to be generated. All of those are required to be considered if there, there's going to be a rezoning of a property and the applicant has not provided that information. Also, the applicant does not have a clear proposal. So the applicant has confirmed they do not know who's actually going to go in there. So how can we decide if this is going to be the, to the detriment of the community if we don't actually know who the tenant will be? Um, I think for a while, we were told it was going to be a coffee shop, but I'm sure we all saw on the news nationally, Starbucks is closing stores, so I'm not quite convinced they're going to be opening a new store here. Um, if it's not going to be a Starbucks, what's it going to be? Um, without knowing that, we can't do a proper analysis. And from our perspective, that would be an arbitrary and capricious decision to approve this rezoning. Thank you.
All right, Bob or Robert Semaday?
Hi, my name is Robert Semaday. I live in Amherst. I just wanted to talk to you about this Miller's for, um, rezoning. Um, I guess my question is, I don't really understand why we would want to rezone a, a neighborhood area into a commercial business area where pretty much anything can be put there. You could be putting an adult gentleman's club or we could be having anything with a drive-through that's going to create a lot of, um, admissions. I have my kids that go to, uh, my parents' house, they like to go to their grandparents' house, but it's going to be kind of difficult to have them go there when cars are just sitting there releasing a lot of admissions, which is just poor for everyone's health. Um, so I'm just not in favor of this and I don't understand how anyone could think that this would be their correct thing to do. And it seems like it's just being done to allow this developer to make more money and not for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Hello, my name is Bob Semaday, three, three towns courts, which just would affect my neighborhood. I'm against this totally, uh, it's a very beautiful neighborhood, it's quiet, I like to keep it that way. That's why I moved into the neighborhood five years ago. Had I known that, uh, a developer was going to try to affect the area, I knew that they had this much input in this board, I probably wouldn't move there. My concern is that, uh, we, we never say no to some of these developers and it really affects the neighborhoods. I think we, we have to look at the neighborhood and say, okay, we want to keep it peaceful. When I put another restaurant in there, that's a restaurant, that's a family type of restaurant. So again, without some repetition, I'm against it. And I mean respectfully, uh, Sean Lemon, one of my concerns is, is that I noticed that some of the board members and some of the signs have been on Bevalacqua's properties. Uh, that's kind of a, I don't think that's very nice to do then when we're trying to fight them and we see the board members on, against our opponent there, so. I, I think we should do a little more class in there, bring the signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pamela Henderson?
Good evening, I'm at nine Collins Court. I'm one of the neighbors that is worried about what is happening with this lock. We want it not to disturb the quietness that we have. Most of the people that have come to that neighborhood have come because of Most of the people that have come to that neighborhood have come because it is quiet. Uh, many of us are all seniors, we've retired, we've worked all our life. The value of our homes in themselves produce a lot of tax revenue for this, this area. And so, if you lose us, you lose people. You lose people who are paying taxes, who left other areas and who are guarding their grandchildren, or they do their daily walks. We need to be involved. We're not against any business being there, we're saying, don't make it a commercial business. Make it something that we as neighbors can go to ourselves, a neighborhood business. That's something that, if, if it has to be something loud, we, we have had a very good success with Westher. Westher has put up a section of trees, and I can see them in my backyard, and we literally don't hear anything. We were concerned about the lights on the cars, but they've let, they brought in some very high, uh, trees and they grew up. I'm looking at them in my backyard, I don't even know that Westher is next door. So this is a real issue. And I think that you'll get lost revenue if that is something that the city is saying, well, we'll, we'll have a business there. But you've got people there that are going to be there for the long term, the houses are only like 15 years old, right? So we, we've got another, if we can be there, we've got another 15, 20 years, and, and we are paying to be there. So this is a big, a big concern. There are sound walls, I'm not from Buffalo, but I have been here for a number of years. And people want to live, in fact, we have a new neighbor that spoke last time. And she said, I moved here because it was quiet, I can walk the streets, I can take people with me. Uh, people are, and every time a house comes up, it's sold, the sign doesn't even make it there because they see the quietness. We know what was over there was Nina's, uh, Nina's ice cream shop. And I'm sure they were there for years. We're just concerned about this opening it for commercial business, a drive-through with a loud microphone. There are sound walls, I've come from other cities where they can build sound walls. But something must be determined with the neighbors in that area, or you will lose the taxes that you receive because I will be one of the first people that will leave.
All right, thank you. Jane Arnold?
Hi, I'm Jane Arnold. Um, I was here about a year ago with Amber Sastri regarding the sidewalk. I live on Dauphin Drive. And, um, in 1991, I actually moved into, um, Royal Woods and there was no sidewalk. So myself and another neighbor, we collected signatures and got what was, what's there now, put in. And basically, since 1991, there has not been any maintenance of any concern to the sidewalk. But now I see all these young families coming in again with kids the same age as mine were. Mine were nine, seven, and two when we moved in there. And, cause that, and my neighbor and I, we helped, we, you know, wanted to get a sidewalk down to Bassett Park. So we did have that, but the thing is, um, the branches and the trees are all overgrown and it's just not being maintained. Um, actually, Patrick Lucy, I had a weekly email to Patrick and I was determined at the time that it was the town's responsibility. The other side of the road, I think, is the highway department. And, but the west side is the Amherst Town Board to look after it. And, um, my husband and I like to ride our bikes, but we can't ride our bikes down there because all the branches are knocking you off your bike. And I feel badly for the little kids because I feel like I'm going to fall into the road, even when I'm walking and tripping over some of the branches. There was one cleanup in maybe early May and it was a pretty good cleanup, but nothing has been done since then. And there was also to be, um, after our, um, meeting a year ago, there was to be snow plowing on that sidewalk. And as far as I know, not once was the sidewalk plowed during the winter of '24, '25. So, please, um, do something about that sidewalk and clean up the, the dead trees, the overgrown branches, um, the falling down fences, um, everything. Because the little kids have no means of getting down to their, the library, the park. And some of them go to East High School and, um, as my son did. And it was hard for them to get there properly and safely. And, cause the, the traffic has become very, very fast as well down that side. But thank you for listening and I hope we can move forward and get something done about this sidewalk. Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Bradley, I am, I live on Bike Count Drive. Um, also, um, have experience with this sidewalk, it's my daughter, or Jackie, uh, three kids, so 11, nine, and four. Specifically, it's, it's very, um, it's, it's kinda scary for me too when I'm riding my bike down there or walking. Um, but, you know, we've got bushes, uh, that are taking up about half of the, um, the sidewalk. Um, I had to stop multiple times with the kids to say, hey, if you're gonna fall, fall into the, you know, fall into the grass. You know, with no fog line there, the traffic is, is very close to the curb. So that would go a long way to make it feel safer, but also just, um, you know, cleaning up the, the, the branches, the bushes and whatnot. So, just hoping for some action. Uh, we've only been here about a year and a half, but we would really like to have access to Bassett Park and Klein. Um, and so the kids can kind of walk down there, ride down there safely. At the moment, I'm not comfortable allowing them to go by themselves, so we're, we're gonna go as a family and be very, very careful. So, I'm hoping you can, uh, can do something about this and, uh, we can move on. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And just cause, uh, so the sidewalk issue, is, is it, is it sidewalk that runs past private residence? Or is it sidewalk that runs past town property? I'm a bit confused as to exactly where that... It's a path, okay.
Isn't it just a shoulder on the side of the road? I, I'm very confused.
And it goes from Dauphin to where?
Uh, to Klein.
Um, Dan Howard, can you, I think he's looking something up.
Yeah, we're all looking at the aerial photo.
We're trying to figure this out.
So it's like a, it's like a raised asphalt?
Yes.
Do you have a picture, is that what you're pulling up?
It's, but there's, there's like a curb, right?
Oh.
So, so there, so there's a request in front of Traffic and Safety right now, um, about this, it's a ki, it's a weird scenario, right? It's not a shoulder, it's not really a bike path, it's not really a sidewalk. So, um, that's, I'm guessing that's why it hasn't advanced to us yet, but, I mean, we'll come back to that.
Mic turn on.
I did talk to Steve Floss, the highway guy, about trying to see to it that it would get plowed and that the area would be trimmed. But I confess, after I talked with him, I didn't follow up on him, and I'll have to do that.
It's not, yes, it's not really a bike path, it's just leftover asphalt. Okay, I understand. So, so you're asking the town to actually construct proper bike path in that area? Okay, all right, thanks, I'm sorry for, I just, I, without, yeah, okay. Anybody else? I, I did read, are you Kathy? I did read Kathy, then Bob stood up and came to the mic, so I apologize, go ahead.
So come on up.
I understand.
Hi, I'm Kathy Semaday and I live at 33 Collins Court. And I'd like to talk about the 2577 Millersport Highway. Sure, sorry, is that better? Um, if it does become a drive-through, we have shown at the last meeting that the speaker is only like 20 feet away from the first neighbor. And it's only 50 feet away from our property, okay? Um, also, there was a letter from Nina's to Bevelacqua about having a drive-through that he wished he would have had a, when he opened the property 30 years ago for Nina's. However, when he closed Nina's, he stated in the newspaper that he closed because he was retiring. And I can't believe that he would stay in business for over 30 years if he wasn't making a profit. So I really don't think that that had anything to do with it. And we know that he, the owner of Nina's sold the property to Mr. Bevelacqua. Um, there have been no traffic, sound, or emission studies, and there's still no clear proposal for the property. I agree with my neighbors that rezoning is not appropriate or to the benefit of our community. And I would hate to have the town to face another lawsuit without giving this proper consideration. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? I, I will answer some questions after this round of public expression. Kinda go from there.
My name is Drucey Borowitz, I live at 50 Dauphin Drive. And I'm here representing my grandchildren and I have recording of their complaints about the bike path, if I may.
Hello, our names are Louis Sworblin and Marcus Sworblin. We ride to our grandmother's house on a regular schedule on the sidewalk between Klein Road and Daup, and Dauphin Drive. We are worried that the elevation, not only for us, but for other bikers, is annoying because it is not completely, it's a bit slanted. And also, can you please trim the weeds? Because those can get in the way of bikers and my sister says that it may be, it makes her scared.
Thank you, that's on behalf of my eight and nine-year-old grandchildren who use that bike path and it is a little frightening. I walk on it myself, I'm 71 years old, I have personally gone out there with a rake and a, and a leaf blower to try to clear things off. It's a really dangerous place, thank you.
Okay, are there any others? Seeing that, I'm gonna motion to close public expression, whoop, sorry.
Matt Plunk at North Hill Drive. At the end of the, towards the end of the last meeting, an issue came up about, uh, in speaking about the Westwood transfer. And one of the speakers pointed out that many years ago, the town had lost money when they were managing the golf courses and that this is why we should turn the property over to the county, uh, because the town lost money. I think as I recollect from nighttime here, revenues varied from year to year, some years they made money, some years they probably did lose money. Uh, but as I recollect, on the night the presentation was made on the Westwood transfer, the fellow who came out here to speak for the county executive readily acknowledged that the county was going to lose lots and lots of money on this whole process and lose lots and lots of money on the golf course. So, the thing that troubles me is, if, you know, that's gonna lose money, it's gonna lose money either way. Now I know if the county's losing it, that loss gets spread all over the county taxpayers instead of just being borne by the Town of Amherst. But the thing that troubles me is, the Town of Amherst, residents of the Town of Amherst are still gonna be paying for that golf course for another two decades because of the amount of money this board spent to buy it. And we're gonna have that whether we own the golf course or not, and I think that's foolishness. Why not keep it and see what we can do with it? If we're gonna have a golf course there, why not run the golf course and lose money ourselves and just, you know, bite the bullet and have something we own? Because once we surrender that golf course to the county, we have absolutely no control over it and they can do anything they want with it, they can put office buildings in there, they can do anything they like with it, and there's absolutely nothing we can do about it. And I think it's a big mistake to turn it over to them. Uh, you know, we, we can, it was, it's existed this long with nothing on it, you know? Uh, I'd hate to see it go on another eight or nine years the way it has the last eight or nine. But, uh, it would be nice to try and come up with some kind of process that the town could take advantage of since we're on the hook paying for it whether we own it or whether we don't.
Hi, I, I just want to mention on Emerson Drive, um, there are at least 10 trees curbside that look dead. They've been that way for at least two, three months. And I'm wondering how you find out what it is that's wrong with them and what can be done.
So, could I, could I just ask you to restate your name and address, I'm sorry?
Absolutely, Helen Kursdorfer, 55 Manser Drive.
The trees that you're talking about are between the sidewalk?
They're on Emerson, between the sidewalk and the street.
Have they been reported to highway?
I don't know, but I, I keep seeing it and I thought as long as I was here tonight, I would bring it up.
Call the highway department, okay.
And thank you for putting 667 through for demolition.
All right, anybody else? I'm motion to close public expression.
Second.
All in favor? I have a couple of, I'm gonna just try to take these in order. Um, first, regarding the gun club, where's the rest of the money come from? Um, so there's a, the town has an open space acquisitions fund that developers pay into when they do development. The, the amount of money that we would be purchasing our softball field or using for our softball field area comes out of open space. That's specifically what the money's for. Um, it's a dedicated fund balance that can only be used for acquisition of open space. Um, it would be used for that. Um, second, uh, there was a question about, um, the gun club and transparency. And I would say that, I, I know we've talked, uh, spoken about the gun club and the direction of the gun club contract because the prior speaker knew exactly what the transaction entailed, except for where the rest of the money came from. The remaining conversation about the transaction really has to do with down payments and timing. Um, and as I said, that, that was subject to executive session content. Um, the third question I had was on, um, uh, was, was this, the same conundrum of the North Amherst Fire District and the North Amherst Fire Tax associated with it. I do know that the council member Zucala and the attorneys have been working on find, trying to find different ways to deal with this. I won't speak for him. Um, but I will say that because some of our districts are, are not, we contract with fire companies, they're not fire districts of the town. We don't actually own the fire apparatus, nor do we control the district, or, nor do we control the, the contractee. Um, we also have independent districts that vote separately. So it's impossible to do something town-wide or supplemental funds out of our general fund. Um, what we're left with then is this idea of merger or flat tax and fire, which would have to be subject to referendum. However, this board can't sign it, you actually need petition, is my understanding. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
And don't the fire halls have to vote on it as well before, before it can go to a referendum?
No, they don't.
Oh.
But needless to say, it would require a petition. I'm happy to talk to you about it offline after, if you like.
The next item is that, that, sorry. Let me just go through these and then you guys can add anything you want. Um, regarding the, the pathway and the, or, I don't really know how to refer to it, but this, the subject, right? That, that is this, this pathway. Um, again, not speaking for Councilman Zucala, but somewhere up here, there was a page. So we do have an agreement, um... Zucala, but somewhere up here, there was a page. So, we do have an agreement. Looking through Councilman, where's that? Oh, sorry. We did, Councilman Zucala did get the, does have a standing agreement to do year-round maintenance in that area. So, we will talk to Highway. It should be their responsibility. We will ask them to be clearing snow and vegetation. We will go through lighting. Lighting is a little bit longer-term project because we're going to have to add to the lighting district.
It's actually over a year to add the lighting.
But we have to start now if we want to deal with that. And then Highway's going to clear vegetation. Regarding improvements in that area, I think as a board, we're really going to have to look at this subject. I do apologize. I've yet to receive content from Traffic and Safety with a directive here. My guess is, they don't know exactly what to do either because, in some cases, it's shoulder. In some cases, it's curved. But we're going to need to figure out a way forward, whether that's actually, so, and that's going to require capital. So, it may require grant ask. But I think this town board, I think I can speak for all the town boards, saying that this is an area that we'd be interested in trying to figure out and trying to address safety. So, thank you for bringing to us tonight. We will, as a board, actively engage with our departments moving forward. And I do appreciate all the young speakers. It's not easy to get up in a public session and speak. I compliment you for doing that. That's something that, at your age, I'm not sure I would have been ready to do. So, thank you for that. Lastly, this board has been contemplating the rezoning action at 2577 Millersport for a while, for a month or so now, post-public hearing. I think we understand that there is a necessity. The property backs in towards to neighbors differently than other properties backing to neighbors. And I will say, I know Councilwoman Berger, right up to this afternoon, had been working on the developer, trying to require a twenty-five-foot adjacent buffer. Deputy Supervisor Lavin had been pushing to get a clear indication of what the buffer would include. I assume fencing, vegetation, but we want to make sure we know what that is.
I also did speak to them about the drive-through sound system. They are using technology to...
So, Councilwoman Berger engaged the attorney for the developer. So, at this point, knowing that both council members have an interest in making sure the buffering and sound, and sound attenuation are taken seriously, I have, I think either one of them is welcome to motion to withdraw this for the evening so that we can work with neighbors, leave it to them if they want that.
What I would also like to do is get the contact information for the president of the Homeowners Association, and I will work with Matt to set up, who's here representing the attorney's office, to set up a meeting so that we can try and address some of the concerns.
I will.
No discussion now. Talk to me after the meeting's over.
I will say that, I think that the town board also recognizes that there is a property here that is going through transformation. We do understand that the property owner there has rights. They have been a very good developer in the past in other portions of the town. So, I think that there would be a willingness to work with everybody here. So, somebody want to motion?
We don't want to, you're leaning forward. Do we want to withdraw it, or do we want to...
I'm leaving up to the board. I'm just making sure that we do this appropriately.
Do we adjourn it to a future date? What's the appropriate thing?
If you do not want to vote on it tonight, that would be your step. Yes.
Adjourn it to the next meeting.
So, I'll make a motion to adjourn it to the October 14th Town Board Meeting, 2025, give us some more opportunity to communicate with neighbors, and the petitioner to see what kind of possibilities exist for this development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, resolution 702 is adjourned to the next Town Board Meeting. There is a consent agenda this evening. I'm going to ask the town clerk to please read tonight's consent agenda.
Supervisor Copon, one, two was withdrawn. Town Attorney, one, two. Town Clerk, one, two, three. Assessor, one. Building, building maintenance, one, two. Controller, one. Contract compliance, one, two, three, four. Court, one. Engineering, one, two. Highway, one, two. Human Resources, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Planning, one, two. Police, one. Sewer and plant, sixteen, one, two, three, four. Youth and Recreation, one, two was withdrawn. Communications, one was referred to Finance, two referred to Attorney, three received and filed, four received and filed, five referred to Attorney, and six referred to Attorney. And then, I'm sorry, Public Improvement, one was consent.
With that, I'm going to motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, I'm going to motion to open a second round of public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close public expression.
Second.
We do have a couple of suspension items. I did announce a work session. I'm going to motion to suspend the agenda for purposes of hearing. Three suspension items.
Thank you, Supervisor.
We'll give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. First, our very first suspension item is to authorize Supervisor to sign the attached agreement with the U.S. Department of Labor for the payment of back wages. Fourteen employees of Amherst, and I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our second, our second suspension is Youth and Recreation is requesting Supervisor to sign a contract with Recreation Design and Supply for the provision of Miracle Recreation Equipment for the following town playgrounds: Eggersville Community Park, Dellwood Park, Creequod Park, Kingsgate Park. Playground are originally constructed with Miracle Equipment. There's no universal parts available. So, Miracle is a sole source. This is a timely matter necessary for safety repairs to be made, and I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one I'm going to take, I'm asking the Town Board to please authorize Supervisor to sign an authorization letter for the purposes of allowing 716 Sports Complex LLC and its consultants to file land use applications for the purpose of a proposed project to be developed on land owned by the town of Amherst consisting of a portion of 330 Maple Road, SPL 55.03-1-10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we're asked to please have more public comment about the proposed project at the former gun club. This would put it on a path to go through our boards for review and public comment. With that, I'm going to motion to return to regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.